Mayor, we are live.
Welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Call to order at 3:28 PM. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Rotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kusakian. Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Asadurian.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on August 15, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, and what's next?
Community Development Annual Report Fiscal Year 2023 and 2024.
Mr. Galanion's waving at me.
Mayor Asadurian, Mayor City Council. The reason I waved at you because I wanted to get an opportunity to say a couple of words on this before Mr. Calvert started his presentation. Just wanted to take a minute to extend my deep appreciation to community development departments, planning and building and safety teams that over the last couple of years have worked diligently and done a remarkable job to improve turnaround times for the vast majority of permit applications. Although it's been difficult at times, nevertheless, they've been able to reduce the processing time without adding additional staffing. They listened to you, City Council, they listened to the city manager and to the community, and have been able, through their efficiency, to work diligently, again, to reduce this processing times. They deserve to be congratulated. Most of them are here, if not all of them, in the audience, and should celebrate this outstanding achievement. With that, I turn it over to Mr. Calvert, the proud department head of the Community Development Department.
Thank you, Mr. Galanion. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. A couple of points I just wanted to make really quick before I jump into the presentation. First, you'll notice that this has a bit of a theme. We like to have fun with these documents. Our first one was very governmentally, if you will. We had an outside company take care of that for us the first year. But I think we have a lot of fun putting this together in-house, and I'd like to thank Sebok DeShoian for putting this together. You'll notice that this has a cinematic theme to it. Each page representing a different movie. You might even find a little Easter eggs in here every now and then that relate to that movie, but just a means to have a little fun with this. So I deeply appreciate the effort and the work that he put into this. Sebok, if you were here, if you could stand up really quick. There he is. I think he has done a good job where every year we can start looking forward to what kind of theme he's going to produce for this next time. I would also like to sincerely thank the entire community development staff. It is through your hard work and your efforts that the comments that Mr. Galanion made, but also just all the other work that we do. Everything that you do, your commitment to this, your tenacity, I deeply appreciate everything that you do for this department and for this city. With that being said, I am going to keep this presentation relatively brief. Some high-level points to make. Most of the information is in greater depth than in the actual annual report. So I'll leave it to council to take a look at that at their own convenience, but just kind of hit some highlights, if you will.
Mr. Calvert, before you go on, I think it would be nice for GTV6 to flip the cameras around for one second because we do have a full house of people at home watching. Don't see the incredible staff that make up the Community Development Department. And I don't think we caught Sebok either. I don't know if GTV6 flipped it around. There we go. That's the awesome team behind all the work that Mr. Calvert will be presenting. And if I can have Sebok stand up one more time? There you go. All right. Please proceed.
Thank you. So just a quick department overview in terms of our presentations, number of public meetings that we've attended. You've noticed that in the past fiscal year, we've had a slight uptick in our city council meetings, a number of items that we've presented. We'll probably see that number even go higher in this next fiscal year as we've been before you with many items already in the early part of this fiscal year. We saw a pretty significant jump in our design review board meetings as well, as we've been taking more cases on that, and you'll see some of the data on that later. And then it's been a little slower in some of the other boards and commissions, but those are also ones that tend to be a little bit lighter. Design Review Board and City Council really are kind of our meat and potatoes, if you will, in terms of public meetings. So first, I'm going to touch on the Planning Division. Now, I've incorporated the Rock Haven Project in here as part of the Planning Division, even though it's being led by our Economic Development Team. Because it is such a comprehensive effort, it is not just being led by our astute project manager, Mark Berry, but it's working with our historic preservation. Ultimately, it'll be working with our Planning Division, Building and Safety, Parks and Community Services, Public Works. So it really is kind of an all-hands-on-deck. I won't go into this too deep today because you're going to hear about this later on tonight, but right now, we have essentially developed a conceptual plan that will be put forth to council this evening to get your direction. And if council approves, we'll be able to move into construction documentation, final design, and beginning to realize the preservation of this site as a public open space, as a museum, as the state envisioned, and then identifying the uses for the other buildings. Our general plan efforts from our long-range division that we recently created, taking on a number of updates to our general plan. Just a couple of weeks ago, you saw the land use element before you. You will see the circulation element, which that was touched on briefly as well, in addition to environmental justice. You'll see those continue to evolve over the coming fiscal year. There will also be an open space and conservation element, as well as a recreation element that our team's working on, and the safety element. So a lot of major, significant updates. Most of these, as we had highlighted to City Council a couple of weeks ago, are out of date, and in the case of environmental justice, that will actually be a new element for us. And significant appreciation for the public engagement that Vilius Ematitis and her team has put together through this. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the open houses, the town halls, the events that they've shown up at, and the hundreds of people that have shown up to give their input on what the future of land use should be here in the city of Glendale. Looking at our Building and Safety Division, one of the biggest accomplishments we had this year, again, in that focus of trying to be faster, quicker turnaround, is bringing instant permits live. We used to have a number of items that we were able to handle directly over the counter. Customers could come in, we could take a look at the drawings, sign off there. That changed when the Intergov system went into process, largely because it has to go into that portal, then it has to be routed. We have since been able to bring back what was a two-to-four-day turnaround for short time, short kind of timeline permits, back to essentially zero days, or in the case of some solar, one. And that is because we're able to offer instant permits, provided that they meet the minimum requirements. This brings us back to where we were with a number of permits that we were taking in, again, over the counter. So maybe not necessarily a major step forward from where we were, but it's getting those things back to being quicker and adapting and learning from our Intergov system, which we've had to do along the way. We celebrated Building and Safety Month this year, had that out in the plaza, DJs, food, vendors, local designers, local architects, really an opportunity for them to get to know staff, us to get to know them, be able to ask questions and engage with us in a less formal fashion. As part of that, we also branched out in terms of our engagement. Staff going to local schools, hopefully not recruiting them, but too young of an age, but who knows, maybe they can enter into an internship program for us. But the students were very excited about this, to learn about Building and Safety, to learn about what it is that we do in that division. And we've received additional inquiries from other schools to come back and engage with them as well. So we'd like to be able to expand this into some of our broader engagement, right? A lot of the work that we do is not only for future residents now, or, excuse me, current residents now, but future ones, the future generations that will live here. So being able to engage youth, we think was, one, inspiring as part of this, but also kind of a teachable moment for us and the rest of our public engagement that we're moving forward with. Our Economic Development Division, number of businesses that were assisted, about 213 this year. You can see down in that little pie chart where it is that we offer that assistance, facilitation of business resources, marketing, social media, our business concierge service, which is essential for significant projects, those small businesses that we want to help get open, and then also site selection services. A lot of our efforts go into helping retail and restaurant, a lot of the small businesses here in Glendale, but we also have, obviously, a lot of tech companies that are part of that. Our events, we had a number of them over the past year. Our Small Business Summit continues to grow, which I'll touch on in a minute. Glendale Tech Week, our Tech on Tap events, our business webinars. So a number of means for us to be able to engage with our local businesses, recruit local, or recruit businesses to our local economy, but also offer resources so that we can assist in their growth and establishment here within the city. As part of that, we ran an HR hotline. We took over 100 calls. We were advising on topics, addressing topics such as benefits, hiring, leave, certain laws, termination, wages, hourly pay, things of that nature. And that HR hotline was able to provide resources, especially for small businesses that normally would cost them money to have to utilize. And for us, it was done at a relatively small price to pay. And it was able to help them access those resources, again, that they may not normally be able to afford, or may not have an HR department like a larger organization would. Our Small Business Summit, entering its second year, with the programming change, it shifted a bit in how we went through and breakout sessions, different means for people to engage with local resources, those that were brought in for the event, businesses being able to get advice, be able to get access to resources. But we saw that attendance grow, double. We were about 200 last year, about 400 this year. And again, I believe that this is something that really shows our unwavering support for all our small businesses and how we can connect them to the resources that they need. We also launched our new magazine, Evoque. This is intended to highlight our local small businesses, restaurants, artists, things of that nature. Readership has climbed up over 900 at this point. This was our first kind of dapple into that. We were expecting two per year. We'll be releasing another one here later on this year with much more substantial content, if you will, as we continue to grow and expand this. We've heard a number of positive feedback from local businesses, the community itself. You might even notice this sitting on coffee tables in some hotels around here as they've really taken to it. And the demand to be featured in this magazine has also grown significantly as we were trying to map out our content. Now we have that content coming to us. So there's a lot of excitement that's been generated around that. Our Housing Division, you just heard of several different items that we went through this afternoon. Our direct assistance increasing by $8 million. Our vouchers have stayed relatively flat, but our new Section 8 recipients have jumped up, and that is through new programs, such as our emergency housing voucher programs. We were given a number of new vouchers, I believe well over 200, the first time we have received those, and I believe close to 20 years, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe 40, I can see Peter out there. Correct, yes? So that was a big win for us, to be able to add to that portfolio, to be able to house more individuals. Our Piedmont Senior Affordable Housing Project, currently negotiating the affordable housing units that are there. This is a property that we were able to acquire. It's a former 112-bed seniors assisted living facility. We have nearly 70 units for extremely low and very low and low-income seniors, again, adding to our growing portfolio. You heard Peter Zovak earlier as well, discussing our opportunity for matching funds to start a new project, and we continue to expand that portfolio of projects that we are directly involved in, in terms of bringing them to market. Citrus Crossing, one of the few projects that I think I have seen in my entire life that the actual built project itself looked better than the rendering. Usually, the renderings tend to dress projects up pretty well, but if you have not had a chance to go see this project, it is a beautiful project. We are hosting the ribbon cutting here on September 17th, the next month. Significant accomplishment that was paired up with our Harawa Village Project as well. And then you heard about the Section 8 Annual Plan. Again, over 20 years now, we've been considered a high-performing agency for the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the federal government. Again, a testament to the commitment and the work that our Section 8 team does. I say this about every time I'm here, whether it's here or at another meeting. I do firmly believe that our Housing Division, both Section 8 and those developing the projects, are doing more for affordable housing than just about anybody else in Southern California. We have the largest project in the state of California under construction right now, and again, you heard HUD's holding us as a high-performing agency through our Section 8 program, and it's something that truly is impactful and altruistic work that that team is doing. Our Administration Division, I won't go through the budget here, as you saw that earlier in the year, but we wanted to put that in for reference. It's also in the document itself, but this remains the same from the budget that was adopted earlier this year. But our Alex Theater, we continue to expand the portfolio of performances that are there. Over the past year, we have hosted artists from Peru, Spain, Iran, Armenia, El Salvador, France, Mexico, and a number of other countries. So we are seeing this really grow into a venue that appeals to international interest, something that can bring a number of different cultures' performance types to this theater, to Glendale, granting us some additional exposure, if you will. We expect to see this continue to build and grow. An annual report will be coming to the City Council in the coming months that will be presented to show the performance over the past fiscal year. We recently launched a new CDD social media page, My CDD Glendale. It's an opportunity to kind of show the inner workings of the department, the work that we do, highlight major projects, give kind of quarterly updates, if you will, and really try to engage in a little bit of a different way, if you will. I mentioned trying not to be quite as governmentally. This is another one of those tools that we have, that we continue to try to grow, and really is an opportunity to show off the work that we've done, to help give the resources to our customers, to our applicants, and to really engage the public in an even more meaningful way. Then our Neighborhood Services Division. Over the past fiscal year, we have seen an increase in the total number of calls and inquiries responded to. Inspections actually declined. That's continued to be the case. Our BRC renewals also declined, as we did not have as many this year, just weren't needed. But you see a substantial increase there in the new BRCs. There's a 66% jump this year. As I had mentioned last year in the annual report, we were going to move towards a more proactive engagement to get all of our businesses signed up for this. So you see that reflected here in this fiscal year. We'll continue to see that grow in the coming fiscal years. As part of that BRC program, we also simplified it. We were asking a lot of questions, a lot of information, a lot of additional resources that weren't truly necessary. Our BRC was being treated as a license, but we also walked around touting it as if we did not have a license in the city. We have made this a much easier process, therefore it doesn't require the additional work that has gone into it before. Again, this is not intended to be a license, and unfortunately, the way it was kind of set up previously is that that's kind of how it was treated, the amount of work, effort, and labor that would have to go into it, not just by our own staff, but also somebody who was applying for one. In the past year, a number of awards. We were named one of the top five cities, business friendly cities, in LA County. We also received two awards from CAL-ED, that is, the State Economic Development Agency. We got one for the HR hotline that I mentioned before, and then the Choose Glendale campaign as well. And then a special acknowledgement to our building official, R. Saragizian. He was given a lifetime honorary member award to the International Co-Council LA Chapter earlier this year as well, recognizing his contributions to the profession and his work and commitment to the building and safety industry. The last thing I'd like to touch on is what Mr. Galanion alluded to previously, and that's in terms of our permits and our timelines, and the efforts that have been made to try to improve that. If we look at just the planning entitlement applications that have come in, we have a 9% increase in the total number of applications. It's actually been busier in the past year, which is great news for us, keeps us busy, obviously, but also means that our city is continuing to develop and grow. During that period of time, we have started tracking data. We've now been able to do that, starting in January of 2023. I'd say about the first 90 days of Intergov, the data would be relatively unreliable, right? We're just putting in things in, we're getting accustomed to the system. So starting in January 2023, we're able to go back, pull that data, and compare that year-over-year coming into the end of this fiscal year. And what we've seen is a significant decline in the timelines for some of the most popular applications. I'll go through a couple of these tables as I move through this presentation. Note that we are not able to get all of the data and all the information for every permit. There's a number of different reasons behind that. Some happen to run longer, therefore, in this timeline that we've had in our gov, we wouldn't be able to calculate that data. We also have to have reports essentially constructed and created by our ISD department to help facilitate that, and we're still getting new with this. So we had to get relatively selective in where we were going to analyze the timelines for our permits. And we focused on those that were most important, those that we hear are kind of the most consternation with, if you will. Our Admin Design Review, you see that go down by 43% year-over-year. Our Admin Exceptions going down by 47%. Admin Use Permits going down by 60. Design Review going down by 40. Those are obviously very round numbers, which means we do have a limited amount of data here to work with, because these also tend to be longer timeline projects. As we continue to build this over the years, we'll be able to continue to get more and more accurate data that will show those timelines a little more effectively, because we weren't able to have as many included in this. We only factored in those that essentially entered into Intergov following January of 2023 to today. We did not want to muddy that up with other applications that had maybe come in before who were transitioning into Intergov. And again, those that were started and completed within that timeframe is what we're looking at. Again, it's a small sampling size, but I think it speaks to the efforts that have been made, and that there is a change that has been moving forward. Are we done yet? Absolutely not. In fact, we'll be in front of City Council in September, October, with our next wave of processing and code changes, but I think it definitely shows a step in the right direction for us processing entitlements and permits. And again, that is in light of having a 9% increase in applications. Our timeline's been going down, but we've actually been getting busier during that timeframe. Looking at Building and Safety, again, with that, we've seen an increase of 9% in their applications as well. About 7,147 last year, 7,753 this fiscal year. An important number in here, even though we saw increases in both inspections completed and scheduled, is that Plan Checks Completed number. It's down by 17%. And that's an important note to make, because what that means is that we had less resubmittals. That means that we did not have people coming back maybe three, four, or five times. While we were busier and processed more applications, the number of plan checks went down because we had less resubmittals. And that, I believe, can be attributed to our staff's attempts and efforts to really work with clients, customers, on that get-to-yes philosophy, trying to coach and guide, give them solutions, help guide them to solutions a little better. I think our applicants have also accommodated, adapted to this as well, and giving us a better product at the end of the day. So we've seen that number come down, which is a good thing. We're getting it right more in the first or second round of things, rather than the third or fourth. So again, application's up, but those plan checks actually coming down. And then looking at that from the plan check numbers, we had selected, again, some of those popular ones we have in here. We looked at ADUs, commercial mixed use, multifamily, single-family, fences, restuccoing. These all have seen a significant change. Building and Safety is ranging anywhere from 21% to 49% timeline reductions. You see fences went down, not quite as much. If we look at those same numbers from the Planning Division, again, we're trying to find permits where both divisions are overlapping right now. We see substantial increases for them as well. Almost 14% for single-family, ranging all the way up to about 33% for multifamily. We do see an uptick in fences. That's obviously something we're going to need to take a look at. That is one of those items that we'll be coming back to talk with council in September, October, as we look at more of those process improvements. But these are significant increases, or decreases really, but an increase in both productivity, quality, and really reflects the commitment that these two teams have really had to try to reduce these timelines, bring things into a process faster, smoother, and one that is focused very much on assisting our customers and our clients. So again, I am deeply appreciative of the Planning Team and Building and Safety Team for your commitment in making this happen. This was a huge, huge improvement from where we were. Again, we are not done. We have a lot of more things to get done, a lot of other changes to make, but I think the changes that have happened so far and their willingness to step up to that challenge can be reflected in these numbers, again, with our number of applications actually going up. Some major upcoming initiatives for the department. We will be assembling and creating a communications team here in the coming weeks and months. We'll actually be interviewing for a position for that, to lead that. Council gave us direction earlier in the fiscal year regarding standardized ADU plans. That will roll out by January 1 of this coming year. You'll see a department action plan come before the City Council here in October to help you prioritize the initiatives for our department, help us, help you understand the resources that we'll need in order to achieve some of those things, and programs and projects that we think best reflect and support the work that we are doing and trying to do for the community. We'll also be working on a tenant improvement fast-track review process. Anyone with a small business and a tenant improvement that does not require HVAC, fire, a much faster turnaround time. We were aiming for somewhere in the range of five days to be able to get that out the door, to help our businesses get open faster. And then we have our tech growth program, another $1 million grant coming from the state. You'll see that come before council here in the coming weeks as well, as we choose who it is that will be accepting or be receiving that grant. And then in September, we'll be coming to City Council to discuss more on Neighborhood Services, on how it is that we are going to enforce some of our ordinances, through education, through outreach, and how do we attain compliance, also trying to get council's priorities, if you will, in what we're enforcing. Last thing we'll have really quick, I didn't get a chance to put this in your printed copy because this is something that just happened. Los Angeles Business Journal recently featured us as part of their LA Rising section, Glendale. You can see the cover there on the left. They featured a number of significant projects here in the city of Glendale that are ongoing. You have the Arowan in there, the Armenian-American Museum, our Affordable Housing Developments, Hotel Indigo, and it was an opportunity to really kind of spotlight the growth in Glendale, the evolution of Glendale, and some of the great work that's going on there. They also did a feature piece on a local architect as well, and the work that he's been doing in terms of multifamily. In fact, that's the rendering there on the left from Alan Malecki. With that, that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions, and again, I would like to extend my sincerest gratitude and appreciation to the staff. I am extremely grateful for the work and the effort that you do for this department and this city.
Mayor, I do have a few callers for this item, and I do have three cards for this item.
All right, let's take the comments first, and then we'll... Mr. Calvert, thank you for your very thorough report. I think we all have a lot of comments and questions, but I'm going to leave that to after. Thank you.
All right.
Speaker, cards first. Thank you.
Rick Lemo.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff. I really appreciate having this opportunity to give you a few opinions on our Community Development Department. As many of you know, I've been involved here in Glendale for 25 years, and to see some of the changes that have taken place are really gratifying. I know that the stats sound good, but stats usually don't mean much until you see how they are in practice, and they really have come a very, very long way. We've got a whole different attitude that was really necessary in community development. They've developed a fresh process of listening to people's concerns, and they started that by doing outreach. I first got to sit in an outreach meeting that they had with architects primarily, and then, one-on-one, they interviewed every one of us, took about an hour and a half for mine with the survey company. All we really discussed was problems. We didn't talk about anything that was good. We only talked about things that needed attention. And they picked up the gauntlet and really went ahead with some really good changes. In addition to hearing our concerns, they gave us guidance of how we can move through a system where everybody is looking for the same answer, which is yes. We've got to find a way to make it work, and they helped us learn that. Seeing this responsible approach to planning, plan check process, and easier access to administrative help makes business feel welcome. I know that you all feel that way, but it's really good to know that in practice, so that when it comes down to things, staff is more of a partner coming to City Council because the questions have been answered. They don't need to take up your time going through those, and problems have been solved, and creative solutions get uncovered, so that business doesn't come here with our foot, our feet in stone. There's significant financial benefit to everybody concerned. The city saves money when efficiencies in process are implemented. The city increases revenue as business can open sooner, and that creates additional sales tax and bringing additional employees to Glendale. The other thing is, it really helps with PR. I've had the benefit of the last 27 years of being involved with probably seven different cities, and it's unbelievable. When I first started out, Thousand Oaks had their problems, and I would come into a city manager's office, say, "Hey, where do you live?" "Thousand Oaks," and they would laugh, because we used to have the Tuesday night fights for our council meetings. And if something was wrong with planning, and I said, "Well, you know, I'm tied up in planning in Glendale." "Oh, that's got to be a slow process." You don't hear that anymore about Glendale. So it's good PR for us. When business saves money because the process is quicker, it's clean, efficient, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Lemo. I'm sorry.
One sentence?
No, I have a strict rule, but thank you so much.
I think you guys should be very proud of the department. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next is Richard Dell. Richard?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for the time and opportunity. Richard Dell, Red Architectural Group, Glendale. I want to echo what Rick Lemo said. We are the recipients of what you've heard Mr. Radley talk about. We see the change in posture. We see the change in the attitude in the planning department, building and safety. To process 7,000 permits, 1,700 planning action is no small task. It's monumental. We've had the opportunity to work with many of these people in the room today. We've had the opportunity to work with many of these people in the room today, and I can attest, as an architectural firm here in town, we've been doing this for 40-some-odd years, what's been happening in that posture, that change of embracing architects and embracing clients. They're now a partner. We actually come, we get direction. We can tell our clients it's imperative to talk to planning staff immediately, find out what the direction is, get them on board to find out what we're getting. We're getting clearer answers. We're getting clearer directions, which makes our clients a lot more receptive to coming and doing work here in the city. Used to be, people say, "Well, you have a project in Glendale," and they would cringe because they had to go through a process. We have administrative exceptions, we have DRBs, we have administrative design reviews, five different processes that a client could experience going through two or three. Trying to clean that up, and we're seeing that. We're seeing the efforts of staff. And it's been a long process. And actually, Mr. Calvert reached out to us two years ago and asked the architects in the city, and said, "What's not working? Why is it so problematic? Why are we getting pushback from the business here in town, architects?" And we told him. He listened, and he actually took to heart what it's going to take to change some of this. I wholeheartedly submit to you, for your consideration, allow them to continue exploring ways, to find ways to make the process simpler and easier. There are so many inconsistencies within our zoning and planning codes. It's one code doesn't fit everything, just can't possibly do it. We have buildings that are built in 1920s forward. We have pre-existing non-conforming grandfathered situations that codes can't possibly respond to directly. They need the latitude, planning, community development, building and safety. They need the latitude to be able to tell us, "You know what? It's not black and white. It's kind of gray. We think you need to be here." They need to have that ability to tell us that at the counter while the client's there. Instead of pushing the client away, they're embracing them, saying, "We're going to help you find a solution, not be an obstacle." I think that's really critical for the city as we grow. We live in a great city. People want to live here, they want to build here.
Thank you, sir.
Before you take the next speaker... Thank you, sir. I'm getting notification that folks have been trying to call in for this item. I know I approached you on this. I know we have a rule about after the first speaker, but if there were individuals that called and that were turned away on this item, I want to make sure that they get through.
Mayor, those same people have called back. There are the six people on the line. If there's somebody else that has called that has been dropped off, they can let the staff go downstairs and we'll get them in.
Well, I'm not going to be responding to people in the meeting, so...
I'll let the staff know downstairs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Craig Goris. Craig?
Madam Mayor, members of Council, City Manager. I wanted to just speak a few words about my experiences on behalf of the Glendale Galleria with community development. I don't have any of the history that has been spoken about or talked about. I do know when I first came here, what I was told was that the permit process was very slow. So one of my first initiatives, or one of the first things that I did was I reached out to community development, and I wanted to develop a line of communication with them. And my experience has been that they were very accommodating, that they reached out and we began a dialogue. We have quarterly meetings. If I have an issue with a tenant who has an issue with a permit, I'll call or email staff, and they'll get right back to me. In some instances, I've actually directly connected staff with the tenant. Would it be nice if the permit process was a little bit faster? Yeah, of course it would be. But the reality is, is that, again, this is my experience, and I've been here less than a year, but my experience has been very favorable, and I just wanted to put that in for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have currently six callers on the line, and I've informed the staff downstairs.
Thank you so much.
Alex, you're live. You have three minutes. Go ahead, Alex.
Madam Mayor, members of Council and City Staff, I want to echo a lot of what folks are saying in regards to them coming up to the podium and speaking. I've been very fortunate enough to establish and erect a urgent care in the South Glendale area, who was all based upon the tenant improvement process that was put in play. One of the things that I found so fascinating with such a dynamic business that you're putting into the city was the fact of how outside-the-box thinking there was, how the openness that there was in regards to the different types of approvals that we were going to need to go through for someone building and doing a tenant improvement on their first urgent care. And rumors and reputations, and thus forth, we'll put those all aside. I was very, very pleased on how efficient, how informative the staff were in regards to the different plan check processes that we have to put in play. I will tell you not to undermine or disparage any other cities, but I have another project that I'm building down in a beat city area, you know, we won't name that name whatsoever, but out of the frustration on building a simple hair salon down there compared to an urgent care, just recently, out of frustration, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I said, "Why don't you all go online and see what the city of Glendale is doing?" Because I was able to put an urgent care in faster than I am faster putting in a hair salon, if that makes any sense. So the dynamics and the outside-the-box thinking that's going on, I love what's happening here in the city. I love what's happening with the Community Development Department as well, too, and I like to bring additional businesses into the city, the city where I grew up in, and a school district that I participated in. So I applaud the outside-the-box thinking that's occurring there, the openness, the transparency, and the great information that's being put out when it comes to doing business with the city of Glendale, especially through the Community Development Department. But that, I wanted to keep it short and sweet, let other people come up and speak. And thank you, Mr. Calvert, for your leadership in that department. And Madam Mayor and the Council and City Staff, thank you for allowing him to lead that department that we lead us.
Thank you. Alan Malekian. Alan, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes. Good afternoon. Here are Councilmembers, I'm Mayor Astorian. My name is Alan Malekian, I'm a local architect. I'm reaching out to express my deep gratitude and to commend Mr. Calvert for his outstanding leadership and for transforming the department as our Community Development Director. His exceptional vision has been modernized and streamlined the process, outdated process within the community and building safety. The new permit processing system is now not only consistent and accurate, but also significantly more efficient. I want to extend my sincere thanks to Mr. Calvert and his team for his excellent work as for always being readily available to address any issues that arise, and most importantly, being a phone call away. Our past reputation that Planning Division has created for developers to stay away from the city of Glendale is no longer there, in my opinion. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Chris, you have three minutes. Chris, you're live. Go ahead.
How you doing? My name is Chris Seznick. I am the owner of Paperback Brewing Company. I would like to speak on behalf of the Glendale Community Development Department. As a small business owner with two storefronts in Glendale, I can confidently say that the Community Development Department has been a tremendous support to small businesses like mine. In the brewing industry, where budgets are tight and time is valuable, working with the department has been a beneficial experience. The department has not only expedited the permitting process, but also has provided assistance whenever I've needed it. As a small business owner who built his business from the ground up, I wouldn't have been able to grow my business as timely and efficiently without the support of the department. I've always recommended the city of Glendale is a great place to start a business, based on my experiences with the department. It is a valuable resource to small businesses and has been a help in making my dream business a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Boris, you're live. You have three minutes. Boris, go ahead.
Hi, Council. Wanted to spend a couple and thank the amazing work that Building and Safety has done in the past year or two. I'm a structural engineer, been almost 25 years' experience in LA County. I've worked on a lot of healthcare, a lot of educational facilities, a lot of very involved projects, and worked with a lot of distant jurisdictions and agencies. And the tremendous amount of changes that I've seen with the Building Department is very refreshing and is a testament to all the other departments and divisions in the city of Glendale. So thank you to all the hard work you guys done to streamline this section of debt.
Thank you, Boris. Paul Porto, you have three minutes, Paul. Go ahead.
It's Raul Porto. Sorry about that.
Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, don't worry. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, fellow Councilmembers and staff. Just wanted to take a minute to call in. Sorry I wasn't able to make it in person. And just congratulate the Community Development Department, Mr. Calvert, for all the great work they've done, you know, not just in the last couple of years. As, I mean, I'm part of the Downtown Glendale Association, also a long-term business owner and a property owner in the city, and I can tell you that, you know, I've seen a lot. I mean, I think I remember when we came in in 1979, and they tore up the streets and dealing with that. So we've been through a lot, and it's refreshing to see that the Community Development Department is taking a very proactive move in trying to help, you know, speed up things and just get more involved and doing a great job for the community. So I wanted just to congratulate them, and yourselves too, for having the leadership, to have Mr. Calvert and the whole team, and just wanted to take a moment to congratulate you. I also wanted to congratulate the city. I know it's something I haven't talked about in the past, but during COVID, which is probably one of the most challenging times that any business could have been through, the city was there for us. I know that the Parking Department and everybody in the city was really helping with, was worked with us to try to make sure that, you know, we could save business, that we could continue to take care of our customers. So I want to thank not just the Council, the staff, but everybody in the city that helped us on that. With that, I'll let you go. I want to brief, I know you have a lot of people that would like to speak. So thank you again to everybody, and congratulations, this is great. And one thing, don't let it get to your head, guys. We need to do better, please.
Thank you. Fernando, you have three minutes. Fernando, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Council, and of course, members of the Community Development Department. I thank you so much for the presentation and all. I have to agree with the first two or three speakers. I'm not a businessman myself, but as somebody who's lived in Glendale most of my life, there have been changes, some good, some bad, and of course, you know, I'm just barely getting to know the survey that I'm doing right now, because I want to get my consent on this. One of the things I'd like to see more on this, on the Community Development, and especially when you do John Hall meetings, you know, as I mentioned before and I'll say it again, do include not just seniors, but also people with disabilities as well. Get more involvement, and also listen to your businesses. Maybe a lot of businesses don't know what's going on, and they need to be heard of, they need to be listened to. Instead of saying, "Well, this is our direction." No, the Community Development Department's direction should be all our direction, not just the Community Development Department, all of us should be more involved in what we need to do as a group. And employment here in Glendale needs to be a top priority to making sure that everything goes smoothly here in this beautiful city. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller. We're having some technical difficulties. As soon as I get the name up, I will call it up.
Okay, and then I do recognize that there were a couple of cards that were submitted.
Correct.
I just want to keep a fair system to everyone and across the board, and so our rule has always been that after the first speaker, we're not taking any more cards and callers, and I was very specific to taking the calls of folks that were turned away. So I appreciate the people that came by and submitted cards, but if you did so after that mark, we're not going to be taking any more. Do we have that caller?
Not yet. It looks like we're having some difficulties downstairs. Can wait about 30 seconds to a minute.
Well, Mayor, I think if we took more callers after that first card was submitted, it's just fair to have one or two people speak as well, there's just not many of them. And Mr. Hagopian is a local architect, and I don't think he knew about the rule as to if you submitted after the first speaker, you can't speak. I'm just asking for a little bit of a courtesy for two people to speak if that's possible.
Is it just you? I mean, first of all, I don't know who submitted the cards, so in all fairness, I would not care who it is. If we were allowing it, we would allow it.
How many cards do you have?
Mayor and Councilmember Garpetian, it's two of them. One is Armin Hagopian, the other one is Dr. Antoinette Hume. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Sure, if, I mean, if it's two, then we'll take it.
You should.
Yeah, and again, I didn't need you to read off the names. It didn't matter who the individuals are. Go ahead.
Armin?
You're here, go ahead.
Come on down. I think he was just trying to see if we're going to let him speak or not.
It must be an Armenian thing to negotiate before you come up, because my father always says, "Say a joke before you say what you really need to say." My name is Armin Hagopian. My father, I have an architectural firm here in Glendale, and he's been practicing for 25, 28 years, and I've been with him for the past 20 years, seen a lot of change. Oh, by the way, I'm so sorry, introductions. Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff. Yeah, we've been practicing, my father's been practicing for over about 26, 27 years here. I've been with him for about 20 years or so. These people down here, I've seen a lot of tremendous change, and they are the backbone of what we do, they are the backbone of what you do, and hopefully you are the backbone for them. I've worked very closely with all these people, and now the introduction of Ara Sarkisian, which I've known him since back in the LA Van Nuys days. He is a tremendous force, tremendous knowledge, and a very regimented individual who is, I think, in my opinion, doing an incredible job in making sure that we do things ethically, find solutions properly, and address them to some conclusion that allows the community to work off of, not specific projects or individual people who might need attention to. However, with that being said, there needs to be the address of communication. I think there are certain departments that need a better way of communicating. I've addressed them individually, and I'm not going to say who they are. I had an issue yesterday, communication, communication, communication. Some departments are not pulling their weight and allowing for applicants to know what is the sort of process in which we are in, even though there's a portal system. I know it's a difficult position to be in, I know there's a lot of projects that are coming through, but we as applicants, we as some design professionals, we are not getting the full communication from some of these departments. Hopefully that can be worked out. But Community Development, Planning Department, Building Department, tremendous changes. It is a positive thing. Hopefully be streamlined. Hopefully the portal would be improved a little bit more. There are some glitches in there, but again, I want to thank Ara for opening up his doors. About a month or so ago, two months ago, he had an open forum, and he invited, excuse me, design professionals, colleagues, applicants to come and speak their mind. I think he took that into heart, and I think I see the tremendous development and evolution to the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dr. Antoinette Hume.
Thank you all for allowing me to come up and speak today. I'm a resident in the new pending historic district, which I'm excited about, but what's more exciting to me is I'm starting a project, and I went to the Planning Committee with a lot of angst and a lot of anxiety, because I was told by numerous contractors and architects that they were really sorry that I was building in Glendale. I have to tell you, my experience has been amazing. From Dennis... I have to tell you, my experience has been amazing, from Dennis to Chloe to Aaron, and there's a couple of other people that I've worked with so far, and they've been tremendous, the communication has been clear, maybe it's because I read the website before I went in, and I know exactly what I wanted, but I, I came here late picking up my daughter from Feshaw, because I thought it was important for you to know that as a new resident to Glendale, I've been here less than two years, my first interaction with you all, and Jay, I shouldn't forget Jay, who is the historic district planner, they've been amazing, and I'm very grateful, I'm very excited for what we have planned, they haven't said no to me yet, it may come, but that's okay, because right now, the communication has been amazing, and I'm, I'm, I'm very appreciative, and that's it, so thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Madam Mayor, we did correct the problem downstairs, I have the two callers on the line.
Right.
Gary Sepanosian, Gary?
Yes.
You have three minutes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Gary Sepanosian, GS Construction, I've been coming to City of Glendale since seventy-nine, I'm a general contractor, I have a very good review for past since COVID, the service we're getting is fantastic, all the guys are working, the staff are helpful, the only issue we have is the design review board, it's, they have to correct them and have a speed up our process on permit, and Ara has been fabulous, helpful, he does any problem we have, he, he jump on it in the help house, and I'm very happy, you know, we have a very good organized staff on the, on the City of Glendale, and I'm very proud of those guys, anytime Ruben, every, all those staff behind the desk, anytime we need that some kind of help from the computer or setting up the system or something, they jump on it, they help, they help me, and I just want to make that comment there, I'm very, very happy, and processing is very nice and easy, except that the, all the departments have to put a move on the stuff of this permit. Besides that, everything is fantastic, thank you very much.
Gary P., you have three minutes, Gary, go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, thank you for taking my call. I'm a Glendale resident since two thousand and seven, and I've had the pleasure of building multiple projects for personal use in Glendale, starting off in two thousand and eight, and then lately, a couple of other projects, Adu, a house, and I can't believe how much the process has improved over that time, it is a much more smoother process that starts with when you visit the city, the staff rolling up their sleeves and really sitting down and explaining things to you and helping you, the response time has increased tremendously, there are just a lot more consistent answers now, no one is going answer shopping, because everyone is giving the same answer due to proper training and expertise, and the system, the technology that has gone up that you can track your project step by step is amazing. Yes, there are improvement opportunities, summit the design review board, I do, I do think that a lot of the projects are looked at with the same lens, whether they're large or small, but there are improvement opportunities for triaging projects, but overall experience, a significant improvement in service, response time, consistency and technology, and I'd like to thank the staff for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Well, before we go on to questions, I have some myself, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Calvert, for your leadership, along with all the staff. I think over the last couple of years, and especially last year when we're setting the priorities for our city, I think it is the first time that we've made efficient systems or creating efficient systems, one of the four priority areas of our city, and I call it perhaps the most unsexiest thing, but is the most important, because I think the public in general is used to hearing things like housing, sustainability, transportation and mobility, but if you don't fix your house and how your house welcomes guests, then your guests are not going to want to come over. And I think even the comments that we heard from the public and from the professionals speak to that change in culture that I have been witness to, and so I want to take this opportunity to commend you all, and not just in building and safety, but also our economic development team, who put together an unprecedented small business summit with a very small team, if I may add, and I think the kind of resources that we look to give to you, I think that's part of some of the questions that I have today, to ensure that we're continuing to improve this, because improving this means that we're improving our local economy, we're allowing our residents to, the flexibility to build their dream homes, and this isn't, I think some of the comments I've heard in the past is that somehow this is friendly to developers, developers are building our city, but the architects and individuals and the professionals are actually the ones that are, the ones in conversations with staff and working with staff for our residents and for our small businesses, and I think that's a very unfair way of looking at it, when you're just concentrating on how we're reaching out to professionals in the area versus, versus residents, because I'll tell you this, I may be up here, but I also know what I don't know, and what I don't know is building and safety codes, and I don't know the mechanisms that go into place, but what I do appreciate is the continuous positive feedback that I, I get personally from community members and small business owners about how much there has been a shift, and so I want to take this opportunity to thank you all. I know nothing's perfect, and it's a work in progress, and so I look forward to continuing to work on that with all of you, and I'll say that the Evoque magazines sits also on my coffee table in my office, and I've gotten nothing but praises about that from individuals and asking and how they can also participate. And I did like, as you were going through the presentation, the number in the audience kept increasing, Sevok, so yeah, I pay, I pay attention to detail, and so I do have a lot of questions on different things, but I did want to kick it off by just saying thank you. All right, who has questions? Councilmember Brotman?
Okay, I have a few things, well, thank you for the report, and thanks to everyone who's attended, well, both from staff and from the public. The tone is, is clearly very different from what we've heard in past years, I hope it didn't cost you too much to get all these people calling in and coming to speak, but in, in all seriousness, it, it, it does feel different. Doesn't mean we still don't get the occasional angry email saying, you know, where's my project and can you get it moved up in the queue and all that kind of stuff, so, but I think, it's just anecdotal, but I think we, you know, there's definitely been less of that, so, good job. I guess my, my question is the obvious one, which is, you know, where do you, what are the, the top things you think you still need to make more improvement on, because, you know, this is an ongoing process, and what do you need from us to help you do that?
Councilmember Brotman, I think the second part of that question, you'll see when we come back with our department action plan, we'll probably have a laundry list of, of asks to get to those things. You know, I think the top thing is still going to be continue to improve those processes, find those inefficiencies, I think it was Mr. Dell had brought it up earlier, there's a lot of conflicts, antiquities in our code, things that set up a lot of the problems that we see as, as part of this process, and weeding that stuff out, and that's going to become more and more difficult as we go down the line, right? Some of the stuff we've already done was kind of low, low hanging fruit, pretty easy to do, the other one's going to be a little more challenging, so getting through that process, which is going to take staff and time and maybe consultants from here and here and there, but I think that still remains one of our top challenges that we need to continue to, to address, because I think what you said was, you know, kind of right on point, we're still hearing from people, maybe not as much, but we're still hearing from them, and it'll never be perfect, there's always going to be somebody who reaches out, but we still have more work to do in that regards. While our data, our initial data here is very good, I think there's still needs to be more behind it to affirmatively tell us that we've done the right, right thing. I think, you know, assembling that communications team is going to be number two, we've heard time and time again, we've seen it in, in certain council sessions, outreach, the manner of which we do it, being able to reach as far as we possibly can, but that takes staffing, that takes resources, that takes technology, we're going to be adding a team member to this, to, to assist with that, and we'll continue to grow that team, and you'll see that as part of the, the action plan too. So I think those are probably the two things that we really need to, this coming year, and there's, there's more, probably wasn't exactly prepared for that question actually, so.
Okay, but you're, when is this action plan coming?
We're anticipating October, that may shift though, with priorities, we've seen, you know, a number of council items had to move around lately, we have a lot of items coming as well, so, I'm anticipating somewhere around there.
Okay, just a couple little things, code enforcement team, you had asked us in the last budget session for a couple extra heads, and did we, did we do that? I'm just wondering where you stand, because we have been adding a lot of new, you know, ordinances, and you've told us very clearly that you're going to need some help to be able to do the enforcement.
So we have an item coming back in September, we're going to kind of carve this out a little bit from the action plan, if you will, because we, we've had those conversations here, you know, what are the most important things, how do we go about enforcing them, which are the things that we go in and we say, you know, enough is enough, what are the things that we're going to offer, education, guidance, whatever it may be, so we're going to come back with an item specifically focused on that, and from there, that's going to also help tell us what we need in terms of staffing to make sure that we can actually enforce in that kind of manner, or educate, whatever it may be. So I couldn't answer that question now, we did not add the two people at that time, because we, we wanted to do that as part of that discussion in September.
I see, okay, and maybe this is my last one, with the instant permits, I, I noticed that the solar is still taking a day, I thought the, our requirement under the Solar Rights Act is that it is an instant permit, what, is that something you're still working on, or how do you, you know, what do you see, what do you see over there?
There's still some fine tuning we have to do there, I think we've had a discussion before that there's kind of different tiers, right, once you kind of go over a certain level, we can't really qualify for that instant permit, there's still sometimes information that we still need to, depending on the type of project, so I think we just kind of average it out to be a day, most do qualify for that instant permit though.
Okay, because I know we, we, there was a time where we got a flurry of emails saying that we're not in compliance with the Solar Rights Act, that our systems are not giving the instant permits they're supposed to. I don't expect you to answer it now, but I don't know that that was ever resolved in my mind as to, you know, what's the reality there, and where are we, and what additional things do we need to be doing, so maybe something to maybe circle back on later. I think, yeah, I'll leave it there, thanks.
We have Councilmember Kusakian that's joined us. Councilmember Kusakian, do you have comments?
Sure, yes, I, I actually do, I was trying to, first of all, I want to, for the record, state my presence, I was at a Metropolitan Water District meeting that ran over, and so I was trying to listen to as much of the presentation on, online with my earbud as I was driving over, on YouTube, plug for YouTube, where you can watch city council meetings and listen to them live, and I want to thank all of your staff, Mr. Calvert, for the work that they're doing, I think certainly we're headed in the right direction, obviously there's always room for improvement, the philosophy that made Toyota what it is in Japanese business is kaizen, continuous improvement, so hopefully we continue to build on the successes. My question, one of the concerns I continue to hear despite a lot of the improvements, and I acknowledge that, as you were saying, that a number of things have gone down in terms of resubmittals, et cetera, so I still hear from folks that they'll reach out to someone, they'll send an email, and they won't hear back sometimes for multiple days. What is the department policy on responding to people's emails or phone inquiries, and how are we ensuring that we're keeping with our internal policies?
Councilmember Kusakian, the standard policy is seventy-two hours, though in some divisions, they've actually asked for shorter timeframes, you're correct, sometimes we don't meet that mark, and that could be for a variety of reasons, we've tinkered here and there with the number of different ways of how calls come in, maybe the source point or going back to each respective division, and it's something we still need to continue to tinker, I've, I've heard that, I've been guilty of it myself.
As have I, so it's, there's plenty of guilt to go around, but.
So I, I think it's first, you know, why is it that I might miss one, and then figure out how it is that we can assist staff and make sure that they don't miss those as well, but that's something we continuously work on, and I think that's, if I had to add a number three, Councilmember Brotman, that would probably be it, that we make sure that we never fall through that, that crack, so.
All right, thank you, and I understand that everyone gets busy, and for the calls that are coming into us, everything is an emergency to the person calling, although it may not be an emergency to the person working on the work, that has that workload in front of them, but I think if a person has been contacted once, twice or three times, we ought to look into how we can ensure that people hear back and at least understand that there's a couple of items ahead of them before they receive a response from staff, I think communication is going to be the key. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Garpetian?
Thank you, thank you everyone for being here, I really appreciate personally everything you do, because I couldn't do what you're doing, you have a heavy load work, the performance of any department depends on the number of employees they have and the training that they get. We know that many of the cities are, you know, always contacting our good employees to take them away, and it happens once in a while, and when, when that happens, it creates a vacuum, so someone else has to pick up that, 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 that work. I was looking at the numbers of permits issued, sixty-one hundred twenty-seven, I don't know how many people, how many employees we have here that worked on those plans and got it through the finish line basically, so that's a, that's a, that's a big number, and I see so many faces that I've known for a long time, Dennis, Tamar, Talim from BRC, I wrote them down, so I won't forget any, Tony was here, Milka, Villia, all, all the people that I worked during the, in the last ten, fifteen, twenty years, we have so many new employees that I appreciate everything you guys do, and I hope you guys stay here with Glendale, Glendale's a great city, because we need people to stay and, and keep that momentum going. As far as the, the BRC goes, I think it's a huge improvement, because we had a company in Fresno that was issuing the permits, and you had to send the payments to them and wait for them to return your call or what have you a month later, that's gone, I think one of the things that I hear a lot about the, the obtaining BRC is if you're in a unit that in the past, there were like two units, and one of the tenants combined them, now you have only one, one mailing address, and the owner wants to separate them again, turn it back into original condition and, and have two units and get two BRCs, sometimes that, that creates an issue, I think that's something that we need to, to, to work on. As far as the, the plant check, because I think Mr. Ara Sarkisian is the popular guy today, because in, in construction, whoever starts the, the work, like the concrete people and the, the framers, they get, they get, they get paid first, because everybody's happy, the work started, the painters at the end, they're good luck getting paid, because that's at the end of the construction, but I think you are very popular, because your, your department issues the permits, and that's when people get their, their permits and start work, so it's, it's, it's a good, good position to be in. I think the, one thing that I get a lot from people is the comments and corrections that are given to, to any planning, plans that are being submitted basically, I think we need to interpret the code the same way and not have too many, too many corrections every time, like two or three or four rounds. I know that the complaints that I get, maybe half of it is because of the applicants didn't submit a complete application, I know that happens a lot, and, and, and that's what delays some of these projects, but in general, I think if we can interpret the code the same way and, and also make our comments as much as possible in one or two rounds, so they don't have to go back and forth, because every time we make a correction, the applicant has to, you know, make these comments, make the corrections, and resubmit it back, and there's twenty-eight or twenty-nine days in between. comments, make the corrections and resubmit it back, and there's 28 or 29 days in between that, that the planner has to have to, to, to review it again, resubmit it back to the applicant. Other than that, I, I like the, the presentation that you had and the gentleman who worked on this. It looks really great. It's very, very professionally done. You know how I feel about a couple of projects that are in, in here? I'm not going to go there because, you know, as far as some of the projects, because the people who are sitting here have nothing to do with those. So I'm not going to rain on that parade today. It's, it's, it's a great, great annual report. And see, you've got to put some humor in everything you do, right? So with that, I want to thank you all again for being committed and dedicated to, to our city, to our members of the community. And I think that's, oh, one, one thing about returning calls for 72 hours, I, I know, I don't know if it's possible or not. I have a friend who works for the county, and he's a, he's the head of a department, and they do plant check for different, different, like E M Ps. One thing he told his employees is, or, or people that work under him is, when you come in the morning, return every phone call you had from yesterday. So it may take half an hour, it may take an hour, but they return, so it won't pile up on you for three days, and three days later, you have a bunch of phone calls that you have to, to make. So I think that would, that would put a lot of complaints to, to, to bed, because people get a response back in, in a day or maybe two instead of three. So that's, that's a suggestion to look into, maybe that would, that will help just ease the pressure on everyone. With that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Najarian.
Thanks. Thank you all, staff, for coming in and supporting this presentation. You know, my, my take on this is very simple. If the public and the professionals that deal with you are happy, I'm happy. I can say that in the past year, two years, they've been happier. I don't like to get an email or a, a call saying, I've got my project and it's been a year and a half, and, you know. I honestly don't like to get involved in, in bringing this to anyone's attention because you are the professionals. I still get some of those. So we're getting better, though. So that's, like Raul Porto said, just keep, you know, don't rest on your laurels, keep, keep improving on that. Communication is very important. A lot of the times, as I go back and do a postmortem on some of these issues, it's a communication issue where either the architect or the planner on the developer's side didn't understand what needed to be done, and the staff didn't understand what the developer or the property owner wanted to do. So I think we need to continue with the communication. Maybe it's this returning of phone calls and one-on-one communication that's, that's going to help. Yeah, like Vartan said, there are a couple of projects that I've, we're hearing a lot of grief from the community on. I won't get into that now. But just keep, keep your customers happy, and that'll keep me happy and perhaps the rest of the council happy. And that's a great recipe for, for success for your department. So, good job. I like the creativity in the report. I like the numbers, the metrics, the streamlining, and things, things have gotten better. So I'm happier. And that's, I think that's the best we could hope for, for this, this update.
Right. I do have just a couple of questions. With respect to the permits, response time, and outdoor, when do you think you'll be able to have some data on how many times people will resubmit or review again and what those timelines look like? I know that your current system or how long we've been in the system doesn't allow for that, for us to see that, but I think that's also an important tracker for us to have.
Mayor, I think seeing through maybe the rest of this calendar year, we'd be able to start collecting better data. I think part of that is also going to be us working with I S D to figure out what that report looks like, what are those variables, parameters? And that's something we are still working on. I mean, it took a bit of time to figure out how to get these numbers here. So as we start to, to narrow that down and also have more data, I think we'll be able to provide that a little better.
Okay. And then I know that we keep talking about like community outreach and education. This annual report is a testament to the amazing things that are happening in the city and the progress that we're making. And I would really like for whether it's department by department, taking the material that's in this report and converting it into some different social media and email-based campaigns that we could do. I know we even have some spaces in our city where we can utilize some of these achievements and the programs that are available on some larger displays and billboards around our city where we have a lot of traffic. I think one of the things that I hear back a lot from, especially small business owners, is that they didn't know all that was available to them through our city. But when we talk about being a business-friendly city, it's also how each of the departments work together. And so while E D D may attempt to bring in the business and how we, E D D, for example, works with building and safety and ensuring that the process is smooth and, you know, those kind of programs work together. I would really love to see, I know that in this last fiscal year, I had requested and we got additional funding just for P R and highlighting our small businesses and the programs that are available. But I'm hoping to see more of that on social and utilizing even what the corporate world has really moved into, which is not just your regular mediums and doing your own ads, but also working and doing collab posts with entities and influencers on different social media platforms. I know that some of our social media policies have prohibited us from getting comments and doing collab posts in the past, which, you know, for me, I think it's, the whole concept of social media is that it's social, it can't be a one-way communication, one-way. And the more you uplift and use your platform to uplift and notify the larger community about businesses and permitting processes and clear up, the less issues we'll see when items come up, and our reputation in general will, will go up. And so I'm hoping that, I know that E D D, I'm going to take this opportunity to also mention that economic development team will also be at our first Women's Equality Day event, which is set for September 9. So anybody that's watching, that's interested, I know it's, it got posted on Mike Glendale yesterday, please come learn about opportunities that are available to your business and how we can actually collaborate with the city. So with that, thank you again. And then I know that around December 17th is what I have on my calendar, when you're going to bring back the report with Glendale Water and Power and, and Fire on how we're going to try to fix those silos. And so I look forward to that as well.
I, I think we'll beat that, that date, Mayor, but I do have your calendar invite marked on.
I have it on my calendar, I have it on December 17th deadline. So thank you again to everybody. With that, is there a?
Adjournment?
Is it just adjournment? Is it just not in file? It's a not in file, right? Yeah.
It was just a presentation. It was just a presentation.
Oh, it's just a presentation. Okay. All right. Thank you again, everyone. All right.
I'll move to adjourn, or are we adjourned in the meeting yet?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We're adjourned at 4:47. And then we're going.
We're going to housing close session, right?
I thought we're going to regular.
Which is the regular meeting?
Yeah, we're just going, I'm announcing the regular meeting now. Yeah.
Mayor, ready, closed session.
All right. Well, no. Calling to order the regular meeting of the Glendale City Council at 4:48 PM. May we have real call?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Karpatian?
Here.
Sakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Asadrian?
Here.
And may we have your report?
One would be closed session. One A would be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of government code section 54956 dot nine. One potential case. B, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation, Friends of Rockhaven versus City of Glendale, L A S C, case number 23STCP 01092.
Right, and do we anticipate reporting out?
We don't anticipate reporting out on either item, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, recess to closed session.